All right, it's seven o'clock and I would like to call to order the June 8th, 2020 virtual meeting of the Rochester Community Schools Board of Education. All members are present tonight and I just wanted to start this meeting tonight by following up on communication from Dr. Shaner last Tuesday, June 2nd. The events of the past few weeks have shown us one thing, that those of us who have compassion and seek to understand one another are ready for a lasting change that allows equality to finally be the standard in our country. We stand in unity with our neighbors across the country being persecuted and harmed due to the color of their skin. We will not tolerate this. We stand with all of our students who peacefully demonstrated over the past two weeks in saying that black lives matter. And while these issues often can be seen as political, they are not. They are human and just and worth every minute of the attention they are getting and so many more. As a district, as individuals, as parents, and as a board of education, we are committed to continuing this journey of understanding and equity until every single American is viewed as equal, worthy, and valued. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Board of Education. In accordance with Executive Order 2021-10, this meeting is being held virtually. The purpose of the meeting is to conduct the school district's business. It's not a community hearing. However, we do invite your participation during our meetings and there are several ways that you can participate. Number one, you can request formal placement on the agenda. A form is available on the district website under the Board of Education link. Tonight, there are no citizens who have requested to speak. Citizens may also make a comment at the conclusion of each agenda item. Please use the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to request to address the board or to submit a comment. Once we see your hand raised, we'll communicate with you and let you know when it's time to unmute. We will also send you a form, see if we can include your name in our minutes. When addressing the board, please state your name and your relationship to the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The board's role this evening is to listen carefully and hear your questions and comments, and as such, we will not be responding directly to your remarks. If you'd like to raise your thought, share your thoughts with the board but do not want to speak, please use the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar. The host will ask you to complete a form and all board members will receive a copy of your comments. Please keep yourself on mute unless you're speaking and thank you so much for attending tonight's meeting and thanks to all of those who are watching us on YouTube Live as well. So let's get started with our business tonight and the first one is a very bittersweet but important annual rite of passage. It is spotlight on success honoring our district's retirees.
Thank you. This evening, we are honoring the dedicated service of 20 employees who are retiring this year from Rochester Community Schools. Normally, we would have had a reception to celebrate them prior to this meeting, but we will honor their service at another time in the future in person. In the meantime, there are virtual hugs, handshakes, and tears as we celebrate these employees as they move on to the next chapter. We're thankful for these employees who have dedicated their professional lives to the students of our district. Together, these retirees have a total of 502 years of service to Rochester Community Schools. It is awe inspiring when you think of how many children's lives have been touched by their hard work and dedication over the years. Retirement is the culmination of many successes over the years and we bid them farewell as they enter the new phase of their lives. And we would like to let them know how much they're appreciated for all that they've done for our children, their colleagues, and the community. We would like to thank the amazing retirees for their service, dedication, pride, and excellence and wish them the very best. Julie Cecil, Hampton Elementary, pre-K assistant, 31 years. Myla Clark, McGregor Elementary, pre-K teacher, 15 years. Cheryl Cockrell, Van Hoozen Middle School Para-educator, 18 years. Cheryl DeHaunt, Ruthers Middle School Teacher, 29 years. Virginia Fitzgerald, West Middle School Teacher, 30 years. Sabah George, Rochester High School Para-educator, seven years. Pamela Glazer, West Middle School Teacher, 26 years. Cheryl Gleason, Delta Kelly Elementary Special Education Teacher, 30 years. Linda Hayward, West Middle School School Age Care, seven years. Richard Jacko, Brooklyn's Elementary Psychologist, 31 years. Lorraine Claff, Hamlin Elementary Special Education Teacher, 28 years. Mary Beth LaChant, Human Resources Salary Personnel Specialist, 11 years. Yvonne Lacrosse, Hamlin Elementary Secretary, 24 years. Alice Long, Baldwin Elementary Para-educator, 15 years. Deborah Pocket, Baldwin Elementary Para-educator, 18 years. Catherine Skedell, Stony Creek High School Principal, six years. Barbara Springer, School Age Care Secretary, 25 years. Lynn Thompson, Hamlin Elementary Teacher, 33 years. Deborah Renn, Adams High School Para-educator, 26 years. And Catherine Zald, University Hills Elementary Teacher, 29 years. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, really appreciate that. And my kids had a couple of those teachers, so it's really great to see. Congratulations to all of them. And I asked actually earlier today, asked Scott to say a few words on behalf of the board, a message to all these retirees. So I'm going to put him on the spot right now.
Okay, on the spot, I am, but otherwise your hot seat, lack of a better term, but we all know that term affectionately. And when you asked me to kind of say some words on this, I got me thinking about a few things. A lot of it has to do with the past. So when I was in fourth grade, I had a teacher named Ms. Putnam. And she used to say, when it came to my math game, my math game was really flimsy. I couldn't get division for whatever reason, I was just horrible at it. And she said, what's wrong with you? Are you stupid? You'll never figure this out. Then fast forward to seventh grade and I had a math teacher named Mr. Weir. And he said to me, never let someone's opinion of you determine your reality. And he used to work with me on math every single day after school between the last bell when basketball started practice. He did it for two straight months. And then I had a basketball teacher that same year. He was my coach, his name was Mr. Shew. And he said at the end of the year, he goes, Muska, you didn't play a lot, you weren't very good, but I'm going to tell you something right now, you made more improvement from the beginning of the year until the end of the year than any other kid. He goes, and if you keep working real hard, you'll pass all these other kids by. And that's very moving to me to share because now I'm just, it's all hit me, right? Like the massive responsibility and the level of impact a teacher possesses is immeasurable. It's a measure. It goes way beyond spreadsheets and letters and grades and all that stuff. It goes way beyond that. The impact is transactional and it's also transformational. It's literally life-changing trajectory, changing work. It just really is. And I have so much respect for what all of you have done and are continuing to do. But these retirees, the impact of the wake that they leave behind with all the young people they have touched and the influence that you've had on them and they take that into their lives and then now they're touching people. The impact of culture and the way you interact with people over the course of your career as a teacher is outstanding. It's amazing. And I just want to say on behalf of the board and everyone in this community, thank you so very much for your service because indeed that's what teaching is at its highest form is definitely service. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Scott. Appreciate it. All right, I think we can move on on the agenda. Next item is communications. And first up is Secretary Michelle, any communications received?
We did. Let's see if I can get through these without missing any pieces. The Board of Education received four email communications prior to the deadline for this meeting. The first was the district parent, Tanya White, reached out to the board regarding the district purchasing PPE from the company she works for. We also received one from district parents Paula and Heidi Streetman. They addressed the board regarding the plan for fall learning. Diane and Steve Galinsky, district parents, asked where they could find the link to the last board meeting recording. And Brent Withers, also a district parent, shared his opinion on the plan for return to school in the fall. That's it, thank you.
Great, thanks. Next item is citizens requesting placement on the agenda. As I mentioned earlier, we have none. Item C, members of the Board of Education, any board members have any communication they wish to share? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under new business. So item A, current bills payable from May 1st, 2019 through May 31st, 2020 in the amount Item B, Board of Education regular meeting minutes from May 4th, 2020. Item C, Board of Education special meeting minutes from May 18th, 2020. Item D, Board of Education work session minutes from May 18th, 2020. And item E, Board of Education meeting schedule for 2020, 2021. Any board member need to remove any of these items for discussion or any member of the public? I see none. So I will take a vote to approve the consent agenda items as read, moved by Andrea, seconded by Barb. All those in favor, please unmute and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That is a seven zero vote. Next up reports, item A is a legislative update. This is an informational item. Dr. Shaner.
Thank you, Madam President. We continue to monitor particularly the budget in Lansing as well as our return to school plan. As you may be aware, and just for the public's sake, I am serving on the Governor's Return to School Advisory Council as well as in a work group with the Michigan Department of Education regarding suburban school districts. We're enthralled in the work of a plan to return to school and what that might look like. We don't have any answers yet, but we continue to plan and as well as locally here. You may be aware that we have a task force that's working diligently based on the seven categories of the Opportunity Labs return to school roadmap. The budget continues to be an extremely large concern for all of us and I have no answers at this point besides to continue to be warned that we still may not have a budget by July 1st. We're just going to have to wait and see. And also, we're waiting to see what the proration to our budget for this year will look like. Today, earlier today, I had a conversation with Representative Weber. I appreciate his time. We've been able to stay connected through this crisis and he's been able to keep me informed to the best of his ability what's going on in Lansing. I've also been able to connect with Senator McMurdo and get her perspective on it as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it. Next item is the Superintendent's Committee reports and we will start with the Superintendent's Steering Committee. Dr. Shaner.
Thank you. On June 1st, the Superintendent's Steering Committee met. We discussed, we got a briefing from Neil DeLuca of the Class of 2020 Celebration Planning that's slated to take place on June 20th at Borden Park. We discussed the return to school roadmap and how we were transforming our task force to fit into the seven categories of return to school roadmap. We also updated the board on task force planning. We again discussed the budget and the situation that we're facing with that. And we discussed market research and planning for the 2021 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dana Taylor, can you tell us about the Superintendent Business and Operations Committee meeting?
Thank you. The Superintendent Business and Operations Committee virtually met on May 11th, 2020 and reviewed March 2020 financial information, the general fund budget amendment for the current year, and a draft 2021 budget and the reopening of Caring Steps Children Center to provide daycare services for essential workers' children during the COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you so much. Next up, Beth Davis, if you could tell us about the Superintendent Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting?
Thank you. The Superintendent's Policy and Curriculum Committee met twice on May 11th, 2020. The committee discussed Caring Steps opening and budget projections. And on June 2nd, the discussion was regarding the Opportunity Labs return to school roadmap, the RCS pandemic task force work, the complexity of the options that are before us with respect to school in the fall, next steps, and the market research survey. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is the, under new business, is the Human Resources Report and that is an action item. Beth Davis.
Thank you. This evening, we have several resignations and retirements. First is REA resignation, Jacqueline Clark, Physical Education Teacher at University Hills Elementary. She submitted her letter of resignation effective at the end of the school year and she has been with the district since August of 2017. REA retirements, Cheryl Gleason, Resource Room Teacher at Delta Kelly Elementary. She's been with the district since January of 1990. And Lorraine Claff, Resource Room Teacher at Hamlin Elementary, who's been with the district since September of 1992. RAA retirements, Catherine Skedell, Principal at Stony Creek High School. She has been with the district since October of 2014. And Administrator resignations, Robin Carter, Executive Director of Instructional Equity and 504 Coordinator submitted her letter of resignation effective June 19th. And Ms. Carter's been with the district since January of 2016. And Ryan Consulman, Director of Financial Services submitted his letter of resignation effective May 27th and he's been with the district since October of 2019. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I will take a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented, moved by Mike, seconded by Scott. Any discussion on this item? Any public comment on this item? I don't see any, so I will take a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented. All those in favor, please unmute and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That is a seven oh vote. Motion passes. Next, under new business, approval of bid awards. This is an action item. Dana Taylor, I believe we have two projects to award bids to tonight.
Thank you. The district received, or let's see, two projects are being presented for approval. Requests for bids were issued and bids were received for both of the projects being recommended tonight. All bids were advertised on the district's purchasing website, on the State of Michigan Sigma website, and on Bidnet Direct. All bids were reviewed and evaluated by the district's Director of Capital Projects and/or the Facility Operations Manager and the Custodial Contract Manager. All of the accepted bids were found to be initially compliant with required specifications per the detail in the bid summary and were analyzed on bid content completeness, inclusion of required submittals, and compliance with required specifications by the district's purchasing supervisor. The source of funding for both of these projects is the general fund. For the purchase of maintenance and grounds vehicles, the district received four bids for the purchase of two maintenance and grounds vehicles. The truck are heavy-duty diesel plow trucks that have three-ton capacity salt spreaders and snowplows. We recommend that the contract be awarded to LaFontaine Chevrolet for the bid amount of $74,316 per vehicle for a total not to exceed purchase amount of $148,632. Are there any questions on the trucks?
I'll just ask quickly, are these replacements or are these additional vehicles?
They're replacements for trucks that are approaching end of their useful life. Actually approached that a while ago. Okay, moving on, for the trash and recycling contract, the district received three responsive bids for trash and recycling services. The current waste removal contract expires on June 30th and the new contract will be effective July 1st. The contract includes trash removal at all 25 district buildings as well as a comprehensive recycling program. The trash containers and dumpsters will be maintained by the supplier and will be lockable to prevent unauthorized use. Recommend the district to award the Trash and Recycling Services Project to Republic Services of Southeast Michigan. The proposed new contract is approximately $8,000 less than the current contract, but was not the lowest bid. Republic was selected because it was the only bidder that could provide recycling using a single stream method, meaning that all recyclable material can be collected in one large recycling container instead of several smaller containers. A single stream method of recycling will make the recycling program much easier to maintain. Both of the other bidders proposed a method using a combination of dumpsters and 96-gallon totes, which is much more difficult to maintain. In addition to a single stream method of recycling, Republic proposed the lowest cost for the larger trash dumpsters, so the dumpsters between 20 and 40 cubic yards, which are used occasionally by the district for large debris collection and removal. Based on this information, we recommend the district award the Trash and Recycling Services Project Republic Services of Southeast Michigan for a one-year contract in the amount of $108,604.71, beginning July 1st, 2020, and renewable for up to three one-year contracts. Are there any questions on the recycling and trash removal recommendation?
Mike.
Yeah, Dana, at some point, we lost the ability to recycle water bottles, like the one Scott's got in his hand. Are we going to be able to do that again?
Yeah, so we'll be able to do plastic, glass, cardboard, paper. That was one of the benefits of this. What you might remember halfway through the year, partway through the year with the current provider, they stopped taking glass and plastic. They would only do paper and cardboard. But with this contract, they'll take all recyclables and it'll only have to be in one container, so you don't have to separate them out.
Excellent, thank you.
That's great news. Michelle.
Is there any penalty for, if there was, let's say trash got into one of those recycling bins, is there any sort of penalty that we might incur for something like that?
You know, Michelle, I don't know that question or that answer, but I will get back to you on that.
I would just be concerned since, you know, we're talking about 15,000 students that that could happen and.
Sure. I'll find out for you and let you know.
Any other questions or comments about this from the board or from the public? I do not see any, so I will ask for a motion to approve the Construction Project Bid Awards as presented, moved by Michelle, seconded by Andrea. Actually, now is when we're supposed to discuss. Little out of order tonight. All right, I don't see any concerns, so we'll just call for a vote. If you can unmute and say, all those in favor, say aye, please.
Kristen.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, seven to zero. And we're coming to the end of our meeting. So next item is additional business and we'll ask the citizens who are present at the meeting, if you're in our Zoom webinar and have something to say, you can hit the raise hand button, but in the meantime, we'll call on members of the administration if you have any items that you'd like to tell us about.
There we go. Muted, tough, tough evolution there. A couple of things. First of all, I want to extend my sincere gratitude and congratulations to all of our retirees, administrators, para pros, teachers. We certainly appreciate your service and it's so unfortunate that your retirement is, starts with a Zoom meeting, but we'll make it right. We'll make sure we have you back and invite you back and get some of those great Yates Donuts and Cider and really celebrate you in the right way. But I want to make sure I extend our gratitude and the pride that we feel and the honor that we have that we serve with you. So, so thank you very much. I also just want to make, I hope, I hope the public has seen the letter that I put out last Tuesday and will continue to communicate regarding the unrest across our country. But I also want to take an opportunity to, to remind our young people. Last week, I participated in a walk down Walton that, in my estimation, probably was somewhere near between 500 and 1,000 young people, once the college students from Oakland University joined, and a lot of adults, I might add, including myself and Mayor Barnett. But the, the nature of that demonstration, the peaceful nature of it, the unity that it showed, and the sheer regard for human, basic human rights was so impressive by our young people. And I not only want to thank them is not the right way. I guess I, I would say I have, I often say this at graduation, that people are worried about what happens with the next generation and what happens. That should bring you a lot of hope and inspiration regardless of where you fall in the political spectrum. If it's a political issue to you, for me, it's not. It's a moral issue. But the fact that they're being engaged, being engaged peacefully and speaking their minds and getting involved, and it is so impressive and I am very proud of all of them. And again, this really isn't about politics, it's about morality. And it's about setting a great example for our young people and they surely have followed it and are doing all the right things to make their voices heard. And I want to, again, just say how proud I am of them and thank them for their maturity, not only their maturity of thought, but in their behavior and their demonstration of their hearts. Just also want to say one other thing, if I can shift gears, kind of an odd segue, but you know, it's this whole, this whole crisis has been somewhat odd in terms of not only COVID, but just how we, how we deal with unrest in a situation of a pandemic. Someday, there'll be some historical study of that, might be a great PhD project. But we are continuing to plan for next school year. And I just want to take a moment to make sure that we state the obvious, but it just needs to be stated, is an extremely complex endeavor, depending on what it looks like. And we are looking at every aspect of it. We're looking at academics and transportation and of course, the budget, which is in. which is an enormous concern of ours. We're looking at athletics and the arts, and how to really continue to deliver instruction in a safe environment in our school district. I know a lot of people have opinions. I just, I just want to urge people to take a moment and really reflect on the complexity of that. And while I'm saying that, again, it may seem like a strange connection between the two, but I've said this at previous meetings. There's a lot to get angry about right now in a lot of different topics. I would just urge people to be a little bit more gracious, a little bit more kind, and a little bit more patient with one another. And then, take an opportunity to reflect on somebody else's view and think about it before you pass judgment or before you react. Again, extremely complex times, whether we're talking about the unrest across our country, or we're talking about the pandemic, or how we figure out how to get the 15,000 kids in our school district back to school, or the one and a half million kids across the state of Michigan and keep everybody safe. So, as we close out a school year, granted, there's not enough gratitude to express, but I want to make sure I say how proud I am and how thankful I am for the awesome people that I work with on this Board of Ed. Nothing but supportive of us. And just really offer a few words for people to reflect on and think about. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Debbie, go ahead.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening to the board and to our guests this evening. I would like to just add what Dr. Shaner has shared, with the love and the legacy of this experience for our buildings. It has been just incredible to see the love and the joy as we've sent our students off into the summer. I want to thank all of our colleagues and, actually, our parents for their partnership to bring joy to an uncomfortable situation. The celebrations and having students have some closure has been really very, very hard work to make sure that that happened and could be celebrated. So, on behalf of our cabinet team and the board, we're just so incredibly grateful for our partnerships with our families, to staff, our entire staff, and also to our students who have risen to the occasion and kept our compelling why very synergized. So, we thank you. We are reopening our Caring Steps opportunities for our community once again. If you are interested in these opportunities, please check the website. We're moving forward from including our essential workers, but also including anyone based on the executive order lifting. If you're interested, please feel free to contact us. And also, beginning, there's a survey that went out today. Beginning July 5th, we will be offering a summer camp opportunity as well. So, that is on the website. It will begin July 5th, and it will go six weeks, I believe. And if you are interested and want more information, that has also come out today as well. Again, to the Board of Education, this has been, the complexity, Mr. Zabit was groundwork for what we have definitely pursued, but we embrace this. This isn't going to be a status quo summer. This is going to be an all-hands-on-deck summer. So, we want to ensure the community that we are deeply invested. We are committed to communicating updates, and there's a survey that we are doing through a marketing research firm. There have been some questions, what if I don't get the number, or what if they don't call back? Talked to the firm, and they have certain criteria that they continue to keep calling until they get the information that they need. So, there are opportunities for you also to add input through or talk to us. Also, you're building administrators, or feel free to contact us at Administration Center. Your input does matter. Your kids are compelling why. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the administration? Or any comments from the board, board members? Michelle?
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that every year Rochester Area Youth Assistance accepts nominations for youth within our school boundaries who have gone out of their way to show kindness and caring, to serve people in our community. And because we weren't able to have our usual banquet, this past Saturday, we broke up into parade teams and recognized 19 individual students, and we were able to put yard signs and take their all, like a little gift, and their certificates, and hand those off to them. So, that was, it was fun to see those students as we were able to recognize them in a different way. And also, just to let anyone know that Raya is there for anyone who does need financial assistance in helping their students partake in some type of activity this summer or going into the fall. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is, I know there have been several of them, but I attended a Ruth or PTA meeting via Zoom, and it's just great to see that the PTAs were able to continue to meet and advocate and help celebrate the students in their schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments, administrator comments? Andrea?
A couple of things. One, I know this has already been mentioned by Dr. Shaner, but I do just want to also just commend our students for the work that they did over the last few weeks in the Black Lives Matter efforts. It's something that, you know, when I joined this school board, it was after an incident in our community that was, that was, you know, we see now as discriminatory, and it was really such a big part of the reason that I joined. And, you know, fast forward a few years, and here we are. And, you know, I continue to say to other parents, I never imagined having to walk through this with my kindergartner and keep moving forward with this message. I thought, I thought we'd be farther. And so, while I am, I am so, I'm feeling so bittersweet, I'm really so proud of the students. And I think they're such a representation of the work that this district has done, and you as admin have done, to create a culture that is inclusive and really embraces each other, and I see that in our kids, and I'm so proud of them. You know, I'm, you know, I always say I get to be lucky because I'm the early, you know, Scott and I are the ones with the young kids, so we get the benefits of all this hard work right now for our kids for the next 12 years. And even in a time like this, when, sorry, even in a time like this, when our students are seeing something that we don't want them to have to see or walk through, I'm still really proud of them. So, thank you for continuing to do the work. Dr. Shaner, I know you talked to a lot of students today who feel strongly about making sure that our curriculum moves forward and the impact that we have on inclusivity and equity in our district remains. And so, thank you for that as a mom, and I'm proud of that as a school board member. Also, again, just commending our teachers. You know, it was tough to end the school year with just a last Zoom. You know, my pre-Ker had a parade to drop off all of his materials and last projects that were left in the classroom, because he wasn't part of the, the pre-K wasn't part of the list that could get stuff, so. But they came by with balloons and really every pre-K student throughout the district, I think, got something fun. And so, again, that's just our teachers going above and beyond, even after they were done with their last Zoom and their last lesson. So, you know, whatever, whatever education looks like in the fall, and whatever puzzles Dana has to solve, I know that our teachers are ready to adapt to that. And I just didn't want to go without saying that this week being our, you know, our last school week and moving into summer. So, thank you, guys.
Yes, I feel compelled to pile on, because Andrea, and then something that Bob said, you know, about all the stuff that's going on, and you both said about our student body. And that's one of the things that really gets me excited about real progress for the future is the youth of today coming out. You know, we talked about the walk they did, and they had their signs up and everything, but the coolest thing that I realize, and I'm starting to realize more with this young generation of folks is coming out, especially these graduates, is that they realize that this is not an event. It's not, it's easy to go to an event like that and go, oh, I got involved, yay, and I feel good about me, and then I go back to the status quo for myself, because I don't have to worry about stuff. I think they realize that it's a process. They realize that you have to be consistent, and they realize that they're going out of their way to educate themselves in things that they don't know that they don't know, and they're standing on the right side of history. And to both, a lot of people's points on here tonight, it's a human rights-type issue. And I really get excited about that when I think about the future in regards to the young folks that are coming out today. And that has everything to do with our teachers and a lot to do with the ones we just honored tonight that are retiring. So, thank you again, and, you know, the best is yet to come.
Thanks. Barb, Kevin, Mike? Barb?
I was just going to say, to tack onto what you said, Scott, I think that our students are leading by example, and I think that is something that makes me so happy to see and so proud to see from the children in this community. But it's also, you know, it's just, it speaks to the foundation that I hope that our district is laying for these children, and they're building upon it, and they're, they're going to demand the change. I just hope they remember when they get to the point of 18 that they remember to vote for change, too, so.
Kevin, Mike? Otherwise, I'm going to close this thing out here. Just a couple of quick shout-outs. I wanted to say congratulations to Robin Carter for being definitely RCS's loss, Oakland County's gain. She was named Executive Director of Diversity and Inclusion for Oakland County, so congratulations to her. Congratulations to Dr. Skidell on your retirement, principal at Stony Creek. We'll miss her. And speaking of the high school principals, I wanted to give them a special shout-out for a couple reasons. Number one, you know, they're in overdrive, overdrive planning this graduation. Like, it's crazy. It's crazy, the things that they're doing. They're pulling out all the stops, so it's really great. I actually was, took my daughter to the eighth-grade drive-through graduation at one of the middle schools last week, and all of our high school principals were there, all of them. And it was interesting, because the school doesn't feed into all the high schools, and so I kind of mentioned to my daughter, like, that's kind of weird. And she said, oh, there's like two students that are going to that particular high school. So, I mean, for two students, all the principals came out. So, it was all the principals, and I just, I think they're great. They've done some amazing work this year, being innovative, and I wanted to give them a shout-out. Shout-out to the City of Rochester Hills, Mayor Barnett, and their audiovisual team. The Board of Education filmed an acceptance speech for the class of 2020 today, and they're just amazing, all the work that they've done in helping us throughout the year and every year, but especially lately. And I just wanted to mention again, I know Dr. Shaner mentioned this in passing, but he's very humble. And so, you know, I have to say that there were almost 2,000 applicants for the Governor's Return to School Task Force. What is it? I can't, I'm going to mess up the actual name of that, but, and there were 30 chosen, and Dr. Shaner's among them. And we're so lucky in Rochester that he is a part of that task force, because these are the, this is the committee that's going to figure out the path to getting, like, like Dr. Shaner said, getting our students and the students all across Michigan back to school safely this fall. And they're lucky to have him, the Return to School Advisory Council, thank you, Christina, they're lucky to have him. But we're equally lucky that he is a part of that. So, I just wanted to say that. And if there's nothing else, anything else? A few announcements to make. Our next, the next time we're together is going to be next Monday. We have our Truth and Budgeting hearing at 6:45, and then our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. I believe that meeting might happen in person, so stand by for details on that. If we can make that happen, it would be great. June 22nd, we will have a work session, and stay tuned for details on that. That's going to be really important, and I think we're going to be able to kind of see some really cool things with that. If there's nothing else or no other announcements, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting at before 8 o'clock. Wait, do you have an announcement, or do you want to move to adjourn, Andrea? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Oh, okay, you want to move to adjourn. Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:46, moved by Andrea, seconded by Michelle. Hold on one second, I'm almost done. All right, sorry about that. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 And that is a 7-0 vote. Meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you guys next week.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.